My, um, Speaker, we have in the session house Senator Palacios, Senator Addas, Senator Rector, and Senator Tenorio, and yourself included, totaling five. We don't have a quorum.
And we'll wait for a quorum. I understand a couple of my colleagues are being interviewed right now. They should be on their way in.
Did you get the lockout configured?
Yeah, I did, but I, you know, I decided, I think you guys are gonna walk over there. You can't trust that. I just saved it up. We figured you'd trust that. So, I'm saying, there's gonna be a reason to look like I'm everything.
It is a request. It's a little more of all those kinds of...
Oh, yeah.
They look like, so that they have about seven hundred more.
Yeah.
The, uh, the total is, uh, about three gig. This is two gig. He could do all this thing.
Air.
Oh, yeah. Air is a stick as this is.
But it doesn't count, uh...
I mean, the total thing is just...
Yes.
Well, you can use a brick, and you can do, you got the fire wire and everything. But the problem is, in my opinion, is the, uh, reducing power. Really, the, these are not powerful. The, of course, you know, it's a small unit. It's lightweight, so it's not as durable. And to me, yeah, you travel a lot. But if you work from the office, here, or, or taking some coffee, this is what you're... That probably counts like half a traffic. Thank you. Thank you. It looks really good. Here, let me put it up. It's almost, like, gentle quarters. People would all download the stuff to the, you know, the music library.
I have, like, a cheap, I have a cheap over something else. Like, uh, well, this is true. And, uh, it's all, uh, that thing is so, uh, starting stuff.
One, two. You have time, so... Three, four, five, six. You have the Sony chest. One, two, three, four, five, six. And then, uh, seven. So...
My wife, she didn't get it.
Yeah. I thought I backed my office, my first one off. Uh, a lot more than, uh, four grand. You know, four thousand two hundred. And, uh, more than, uh, I mean, uh, a lot of, like, more, more, more free hours. Yeah. And, uh, what work I've done, you know, the good process, or the big, uh, part of it. And, uh, maybe grab your tools all the time, and, uh, actually, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I have, like, a cheap, I have a cheap over something else. Like, uh, well, this is true.
And, uh, it's all, uh, that thing is so, uh, starting stuff.
One, two. You have time, so... Three, four, five, six. You have the Sony chest. One, two, three, four, five, six. And then, uh, seven. So...
My wife, she didn't get it.
Yeah. I thought I backed my office, my first one off. Uh, a lot more than, uh, four grand. You know, four thousand two hundred. And, uh, more than, uh, I mean, uh, a lot of, like, more, more, more free hours. Yeah. And, uh, what work I've done, you know, the good process, or the big, uh, part of it. And, uh, maybe grab your tools all the time, and, uh, actually, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh...
It's empty, guys.
So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner. They have a possession. You might want to look at, uh, the support, please. It's, uh, normal. Well, actually, it's already... So, uh, so, uh, preparation, which, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh... Well, this is, uh, uh... I'm gonna do this here after. I'm not okay, Bill. And, uh, every week, uh, you call us, and, uh, you call us, and, uh, you... But you didn't have jeans, so, uh, I guess, uh, it was pretty much in here. I don't see why you could see. They wasn't, they had a card out at the corner.[1325.11]
Session is called back into order. If there's any discussion on the motion, do I have anyone who wishes to speak on the bill? General comments on the bill? Do we have any general comments? Senator Pangolinan, you're recognized.
This is Marcy, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the bill that's presented before us is really the governor's attempt to move back and have this body reconsider the actions that the body has accomplished in passing Public Law 30-1. And there are basically the same elements with, of course, the major difference between what was passed by this body in 30-1 and what the governor's proposing is the manner in which the bond issue for the construction of the landfill and the closure of Ordat is going to be secured. What is the guarantee behind that bond issue? That bond issue, after extensive discussion by this body, and I want to reiterate this, by this body, the governor's and the government's financial advisor and the governor and the government's and Getitas lead underwriter for the issuance of the bonds told this body in no uncertain terms that the financing structure that was passed in 30-1 was a viable financing plan. I remember that very clearly because we were all discussing, of course, the court order and what the court order stated and what we were trying to work in concert with all of our colleagues here. And the court order was the debate, of course, was whether the court order basically told us that the only acceptable financing guarantee that this government can give in order to fund the consent decree projects through a bond issue by this government was a Section 30. And it was very, very clear in everyone that read that court order that the judge in the court order said, gave us an example of what is a viable financing plan, and that was a Section 30 back pledge. But the government's financial advisor, Oli Titunow, and the lead underwriter for the issuance was Mr. Russell Rages. When I asked them, one, is a financing plan for a bond issue that is guaranteed by the full faith and credit of the government of Guam with a maximum cap interest rate of 9%? Is this a viable financing plan in today's market environment? And they both stated yes. Simple, that that structure of a bond, consistent with all other issuance conditions and terms that we've had in the past, was viable. Unfortunately, the court, and the court's very clear on this, the court said that did not even address the issue of what is a viable financing plan. The court only stressed the issue that we have to pay the $993,700 a week because the government did not comply with that portion of the order that said that you have to deposit that money. So the fact that we're paying that money is not because the government or the legislature failed to pass a viable financing plan. We're paying that money because the governor did not deposit the $900,000, and this legislature in a provision of Public Law 30-1 prevented or prohibited the governor from paying that in order to have the court consider what she told us she would consider. And that is, if we pass a viable financing plan, she will suspend her order for the payment of $993,700. But the court did not even get to that portion of the order and did not consider that. But I contend that the government and the governor's financial team stated under oath, under penalty of perjury, in this body, on this floor, that the bond authorization using the full faith and credit of the government of Guam was a viable financing plan. So I just wanted to state that for the record. We're back here because the court did not consider that. And now we're trying to, the governor is hopeful, and there he goes using that word again, he said, "I like the politic," but I sort of remember the campaign called "hope," you know? The governor is hopeful that if we pass a bond issue which allows, which pledges Section 30 revenues, he remains hopeful that the court will reconsider her decision on this $993,000 per week payment that the court has ordered us to make. There's no guarantee. The court's not saying, "I guarantee you that I'm going to now take a look at this, what is a viable financing plan and consider this." But we are hopeful. And I think this body at this time is willing to, because the court will not even look at what the government financial experts have said is a viable financing plan, that if we pass a bond authorization that allows the governor to pledge Section 30, doesn't even require him, it just allows him to do that, that...
Session is called back into order. If there's any discussion on the motion, do I have anyone who wishes to speak on the bill? General comments on the bill? Do we have any general comments? If not, Senator Pangolinan, you're recognized.
This is Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the bill that's presented before us is really the governor's attempt to move back and have this body reconsider the actions that the body has accomplished in passing Public Law 30-1. And there are basically the same elements with, of course, the major difference between what was passed by this body in 30-1 and what the governor's proposing is the manner in which the bond issue for the construction of the landfill and the closure of Ordot is going to be secured. What is the guarantee behind that bond issue? That bond issue, after extensive discussion by this body, and I want to reiterate this, by this body, the governor's and the governor and government's financial advisor and the governor and the governments and GIDA's lead underwriter for the issuance of the bonds told this body in no uncertain terms that the financing structure that was passed in 30-1 was a viable financing plan. I remember that very clearly because we were all discussing, of course, the court order and what the court order stated and what we were trying to work in concert with all of our colleagues here. And the court order was the debate, of course, was whether the court order basically told us that the only acceptable financing guarantee that this government can give in order to fund the consent decree projects through a bond issue by this government was a Section 30. And it was very, very clear in everyone that read that court order that the judge in the court order said, gave us an example of what is a viable financing plan, and that was a Section 30 back pledge. But the government's financial advisor, Ollie Titanow, and the lead underwriter for the issuance was Mr. Russell Rages. When I asked them, one, is a financing plan for a bond issue that is guaranteed by the full faith and credit of the government of Guam with a maximum cap interest rate of 9%? Is this a viable financing plan in today's market environment? And they both stated yes. Simple, that that structure of a bond, consistent with all other issuance conditions and terms that we've had in the past, was viable. Unfortunately, the court, and the court's very clear on this, the court said that did not even address the issue of what is a viable financing plan. The court only stressed the issue that we have to pay the $993,700 a week because the government did not comply with that portion of the order that said that you have to deposit that money. So the fact that we're paying that money is not because the government or the legislature failed to pass a viable financing plan. We're paying that money because the governor did not deposit the $900,000, and this legislature, in a provision of Public Law 30-1, prevented or prohibited the governor from paying that in order to have the court consider what she told us she would consider. And that is, if we pass a viable financing plan, she will suspend her order for the payment of $993,700. But the court did not even get to that portion of the order and did not consider that. But I contend that the government and the governor's financial team stated under oath, under penalty of perjury, in this body, on this floor, that the bond authorization using the full faith and credit of the government of Guam was a viable financing plan. So I just wanted to state that for the record. We're back here because the court did not consider that. And now we're trying to, the governor is hopeful, and there he goes using that word again, he said, "I like the politic, but I sort of remember the campaign called 'hope', you know? The governor is hopeful that if we pass a bond issue which allows, which pledges Section 30 revenues, he remains hopeful that the court will reconsider her decision on this $993,000 per week payment that the court has ordered us to make. There's no guarantee. The court's not saying, "I guarantee you that I'm going to now take a look at this, what is a viable financing plan and consider this." But we are hopeful. And I think this body, at this time, is willing to, because the court will not even look at what the government financial experts have said is a viable financing plan, that if we pass a bond authorization that allows the governor to pledge Section 30, doesn't even require him, it just allows him to do that, that the court will reconsider the payment of the $993,700 and suspend the payment of that until such time then that the governor makes a move and shows good faith effort to attempt to market the bonds. And so, in order to at least get that far, in order, we are all concerned about the impact that this payment has on the operation of the government of Guam and the lives of the people of Guam and the employees of the government of Guam that will be severely impacted when we get to a point where we can't delay any further payments. And who's being delayed? The governor said, "I think that he is now, once again, either suspending or extremely curtailing the payment of refunds and other payments to other obligations of this government in order to make that $993,000 payment." And very quickly, we're going to get to a point where we're not going to be able to suspend payments, that we're just going to completely not pay any refunds at all, that vendors are not going to get paid at all, and then we're going to have to start further reducing the cash requirement of this government. And that means then that we're going to impact the lives of the employees of this government and the people of Guam by furloughs, pay reductions, reduced work week, whatever, whatever it's going to take, the government, the governor wants to do. We gave him an opportunity to not do that. But apparently, the governor is not concerned about that opportunity that he has to stand up on behalf of the people of Guam and the employees of the government of Guam. He's not concerned about that. He doesn't want that opportunity. The only opportunity he wants is to satisfy the judge and get a Section 30 pledge. And where do we go from here? Well, I'm saying, let's give the governor, he still is going to have that opportunity. He still can look us in the face, and I can still tell him, you still have the opportunity to stand up on behalf of the people of Guam against oppression, if that's what it is. You still have that opportunity. But if you choose not to do so, then here, here's an opportunity that I want to give you so that we don't take it out of the hide of the people of Guam. And some people may say we're giving in, but we are going to make the necessary compromise, if that's what you want to call it. We're going to make the necessary movement in our positions, if that's what you want to call it, in order to give him that opportunity to go with his Section 30 bond. And so the amendment, I would like to then make an amendment, Madam Speaker, which you have before you, to amend Sections 1 through 8 of the bill presented to us, 1-S, to reflect the changes that the governor wants, which will authorize a Section 30 pledge. And those changes are reflective of what's in the presentation you have before you that would change the authorization that was given to the governor under a general obligation bond to now reflect Section 30 pledge and the implementation of the terms and conditions of that Section 30 pledge and authorizations in law necessary for him to issue that. So there are, those are incorporated in what you see, and that's what you have before you under the underlying portions. Because the governor is amending Article 8, which is existing law, there are some provisions of Article 8 which he did not show that are being deleted by the governor, and so we have shown that by including those provisions that were not shown in the governor's bill as changes to Article 8 by including them in here and striking them out. And those provisions are, in some cases, provisions that are then inconsistent between a Section 30 pledge and a general obligation bond pledge, and those will be removed from that. In addition, the governor gave this body some leaseback provisions that were already passed by this body in Article 8 of Public Law 30-1. And we don't want to go back and regurgitate that whole thing. So what we, what this amendment does is just, it just strikes the issue. We're here to give the governor a Section 30 pledge, and this amendment confines the bill to a Section 30 pledge of a bond issue. And the provisions that the governor has in the bill as provision for a leaseback, which are already provisions of law in 30-1, are deleted from this bill. And we're going to consider only those sections dealing with the Section 30 pledge and other provisions that the governor has included that were not related to, that are not related to the Section 30 pledge or the article. And so that is what we have in here, Madam Speaker, and I move to accept. Thank you.
Are we going section by section on this, or we're just going to do the whole thing?
On the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And to Speaker Pangolinan for proposing this amendment, I thank you very much for explaining, really, the provisions that are contained herein. I'd like to highlight, first of all, before I make my comments, as it applies directly towards the amendment, Madam Speaker, is that during the interim timeframe, when in fact you had called us into session yesterday at 2:00 p.m., and then we recessed until 4:00, by virtue of you allowing us to be able to further review the proposed legislation, and then you came back at about shortly after 5:00 and had called recess until today at 2:00 p.m., that that was not wasted time. On my, in my stead, that was absolutely not wasted time. Because you know what transpired during that interim timeframe? Is that a number of us were able to discuss some of these provisions and how it differed from the original proposal that in fact was presented to this legislative body and that we discussed extensively for two, two and a half weeks. And it's now Public Law 30-1. So I just wanted to make that general statement first and foremost. But Madam Speaker, on the amendment, you know, when I looked at the proposal that was presented by the chief executive, and people asked me on several occasions, do I support what the chief executive had carried out? You know, I'm going to have to lean in the direction of recognizing what he had done. He felt that in fact, the court and the judges' orders needed to be complied with in remitting the $3.9 million. If you ask me, perhaps, and an approach that would have also been taken is in line with some of the comments that had been shared, that yes, we need to comply to some extent with the provisions of the court order, but I think that there's really a deeper question, Madam Speaker, that needs to be answered and perhaps may be pursued at a different time. And that is the governance of our government operations and the governance and the administration of the resources and the tax revenues that is being collected by this government. But despite that, the amendment that we have here would amend the original version that the governor had forwarded to this Guam legislature and had called us into special section. What are some of those provisions that the governor asked us to reconsider? One was the lease financing. I think that for an extended period of time, with the, fortunately, with the consultation and with some of the comments and feedback by representatives of the administration, and I want to extend my appreciation for the courtesy that they extended during that time in responding to questions, the lease financing option was already entertained extensively, and we as a body had acted on that particular provision. So this amendment proposes to extract that section, which I certainly stand here in complete support of, because we as a body, and with some information from the executive branch representatives, had already entertained that provision. You know, Madam Speaker, this amendment, proffered by Speaker Pangolinan, also would extract a provision that was part of the proposal that was forwarded by the chief executive, and that is the private activity bond. Whether we agree with that or not, I think that that also was another issue that was discussed extensively by this body and the appropriate provisions. With that allowance, recognizing that it's only one of four options, Madam Speaker, that was presented to the chief executive in Public Law 30-1. Option 1 was the general obligation bond. Option 2 was the lease financing. Option 3 was a private activity bond. Option 4 was sending out, GIDA sending out an RFP to focus in on complying with the Clean Water Act violations as a result of the order dump. Those were four options that are contained in Public Law 30-1 at this point in time. But you know, you think about the lapse of time, or the time that has lapsed since the enactment of 30-1 and some of the difficult, perhaps very challenging, financial decisions that the chief executive and the representatives of the executive branch that they had to make, certainly were back at this table, asking, with the chief executive, asking if in fact we would reconsider the provision, and I say the provision that directly applies, with the allowance and the use of Section 30 funds for floating and going out into the bond market and seeking some finances in the amount of, that can conceivably go up to $202 million, Madam Speaker, to allow for the use and the application of Section 30 revenues to reinforce and be the backdrop of that particular bond issue. Do I support this with the amendments intact, as proposed by the good senator for Baragada? Absolutely. I support it not only because in this case, the chief executive had asked us to reconsider a previous decision that we made, but also because if we take a look at the financial challenges of this government, if in fact the good judge would consider this proposal, as I believe it would address her original concerns in the very beginning, if she would consider and accept this, then hopefully, the remittance of $1 million a week would not be necessary, at least for the interim timeframe until such time that the revenues are acquired through the bond market. And I support him, Madam Speaker, because I think that if you look at the judiciary itself, only yesterday they came out with a public pronouncement and statement that in fact, the operations of that particular third branch, third co-equal branch of government will be impacted as a result of no longer having access to the $1 million a week that would otherwise, some portion of that perhaps would end up in their coffers, so that it would assist and support the judicial branch of government in terms of their operations. But you know, Madam Speaker, there's a bigger issue here. When you're looking at $4 million a month, so far, 3.9 had been remitted, we're looking at $4 million a month for the balance of this fiscal year, can we as a government conceivably operate and provide the critical services of education, public safety, and health care, and continue to remit the $993,000 a week, or $4 million a month, to the court? I say not. It will present a tremendous challenge to our island and to our government and to our community in terms of what the impact, financial impact may be. So I stand here in full support of this amendment that has been proffered, and I do know and recognize that there are additional sections that I have not discussed, and I'm sure that the individuals that have proposed those perhaps would comment on that, Madam Speaker. But I stand here in recognition of the financial challenges that perhaps this government would have to endure over the balance of this fiscal year, if in fact we don't present something that is acceptable to the judge and allow this government to retain the over $1 million allocation a week that would, that is presently being required and that the chief executive has decided to begin remitting to the judge to comply with her order. But you know, Madam Speaker, I'm not one to only question and to look and say, "Why is this being proposed? Why is this being proffered?" I want to try to look at the overall picture. And there's another part of this equation that I think also has to be mentioned and highlighted, and representatives of the administration have already alluded to this, that there is an application being formulated that will be presented, if not has already been presented, to a federal government entity, I understand is the Economic Development Administration, but I may need a little bit of clarification as to which government, federal government entity that is. But the executive branch, the administration is forwarding a request, an application in the amount of possibly $170 million to help this government deal with the requirements of not only the consent decree, but the eventual closure of the order dump and the opening of the new landfill. And for that, I stand here and I commend them for that effort, for identifying and first of all, acknowledging that in fact, there are other alternatives out there in terms of seeking financing in conjunction with possibly entertaining borrowing money in the bond market, in conjunction with other options, the public-private partnership, the lease financing approach, also the private activity bond. But I commend them for looking at that as a serious possibility. And I certainly hope that our colleagues, who are presently off island and in D.C., will be able to return, perhaps with some good news, that the federal government recognizes our plight at this time, recognizes that a million dollars a week out of the coffers of the people of Guam, and I say the people of Guam because any money, any funds that are not being directed towards the operations of the government will directly impact the people of Guam in terms of the health care, the education, as well as public safety. So I commend them for that. I wish them the best of luck. If there's any reinforcement or support that they will need further from this legislative branch in terms of that application, I certainly hope that they will share that information with us. Because if we as a community, Madam Speaker, approach the federal government and reinforce this application for $170 million, that would be a direct community investment on the part of federal government. It may be a grant, it may be a loan that would be perhaps conceivably a lot lower than what the markets presently would offer, regardless as to whether it's a grant or whether it's a loan. Ideally, we would like a grant, but at least that may be an alternative, another alternative that can seriously be considered by this government in terms of addressing an issue that perhaps has lingered a little bit too long affecting our island community. So I stand here in support of this amendment, and I thank the good speaker from Baragada for proffering this, and I certainly hope that our colleagues would understand that the nature of this amendment would hopefully hit at the heart of the request of the good judge. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Uggan. On Speaker Ben's amendment, Senator Ray Tenorio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this is a 33-page amendment to eight sections of the bill. Many of them seem a little bit confusing, and the reason why is that, for example, on page 4, under definitions, it has item L, which the entire language is underscored as in though it had been added to the, to the, to the bill. That's how we do amendments here. You strike through to take out and you underline to add. Was this added language?
No, this is language the governor added.
Oh, so you're highlighting the additive language?
Right. See, the way the governor presented his format of the bill, instead, he says it's to amend, but he doesn't show us what he's amending. So the ones that are underlined is what the governor is amending.
Okay.
And, and if it's shown in this amendment, then we agree with that additive language. Because he really should have, you know, underscored what he's amending in the original Article 8.
So then my question, then where is the amendment that you're offering in these?
Senator Tenorio.
So my question, Madam Speaker, is then, you know, we're amending all eight sections of this, and we're doing it in one fell swoop, we're not dividing the question. So my question then has to be to the author, which amendment are we, are we adopting in this motion? Are you actually offering an amendment?
Speaker Ben, would you?
Absolutely. The amendment that's being offered, for example, in section, for example, section 6 of the, of the governor's bill.
What page, if you can? Because we've got underlined, Madam Speaker, we've got underlined and struck out.
Right.
So we know that's the typical process by which we add and remove language in a bill. But what the mover of this amendment has said is that he has highlighted the additive and the deleted language, if I correct, if I understand his, his comments. So if that's the case, then what other than what he is accentuating that the governor has done in this bill are we changing?
Okay. Senator Tenorio, that's your question? Speaker Ben, would you yield?
Thank you. For example, where you have a strikeout, that language- For example, where you have a strikeout, that language is being amended. The governor did not show that he was deleting that, and so we're agreeing with that deletion also. So where it's stricken out, the governor didn't show that in his format, so we're striking that out.
I understand.
All right. The other sections, for example, when we struck out section two, which is the leaseback, because we're not going to deal with the leaseback, we dealt that in 30-1, and so we're deleting the governor's version, new version of a leaseback and sticking with the old version in the original 30-1. So because we're really here about this $1 million a week, and the leaseback is not going to solve the 30, you know, $1 million a week, and we have a leaseback law that this body passed in 30-1, and so we're just striking that out in the governor's submission. So section two has been deleted, or the leaseback provision as the governor presented is being deleted, and then there's a new section two that is placed in the bill. So those are the other amendments, for example, the governor amended the bill to remove the mandatory Section 30 pledge for the deficit financing bond, the COLA bond and the income tax refund bonds have the language that says it shall be a pledge of the general, the full faith and credit of the government of Guam and a pledge of its Section 30 revenues. The governor struck that out, and so, you know, I'm trying to work with him here. So I'm agreeing to striking that out, but what I have done is I've amended the bill, for example, to allow him, make it permissive, to permit him that if, that he may use Section 30. So you see language in here that says he may use Section 30 to pledge on the deficit financing bond.
All right.
Then there's two other amendments that we're including in here. For example, in section seven and eight, I believe is the right number, an amendment that if the governor wants additional financing for the bond beyond the $202 million that's authorized, that if he wants more money than that to be authorized for the landfill and the closure of Ordon, that he must use his best, he must demonstrate his best efforts to go and pursue compensation for the $400 million in uncompensed, unreimbursed Section 30, I mean Section 30, compact impact reimbursements. So he, before he asks us for more money, he must demonstrate best efforts to pursue reimbursement of that. Before he sells any assets that consent decree contemplates, that the judge may order us to sell assets and so forth, he must again, before he moves to sell assets under a consent decree, he must demonstrate again his best faith effort to go and collect that uncompensated or unreimbursed $400 million. And that number is based upon the reports we've submitted to the Department of Interior as our cost for compact impact.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the response from the mover, Madam Speaker, and I want to go ahead and I want to clarify it, I think, to the extent that I can get clarification on what he's seeking to do in this amendment, but it's a very broad and sweeping, but I want to respond first to, before I get into the substance of the amendment, one of the comments that were made earlier and the precursor to comments on the bill, and with regards to waste of time. And I think that it's important that as we as a member, myself as a member of this body who's talking about deliberative action on behalf of the members of this legislature, I don't remember being part of that discussion, and I don't know where that discussion was had. And if members of this body had a discussion about Bill 11S, which we were brought here at 2:00 in the afternoon and then brought back again at 4:00 and waited till 5:30 and then still didn't discuss, I wasn't part of that discussion, and I know the media wasn't party to that discussion, and I'm pretty sure that the cameras and the microphones definitely weren't on in that discussion. So if we as a legislature are supposed to have this discussion in a public setting, in a public view with the microphones and the cameras on in the fashion which is befitting any transparent government, then I'd appreciate it be part of that discussion and be invited to that discussion. With respect to this particular amendment, Madam Speaker, I'd like to ask to divide the question in a portion to those sections were actually changed. So the question is, my motion then is to divide the question based on the actual changes that were made by the mover of this amendment so that we can address them individually rather than holistically. And I know that we're up against the gun here, but I, this is a 33-page amendment, and this 33-page amendment, which includes the obligatory language of shall to the permissive language of may, may also be a problem for the district court. And at the end of the day, Madam Speaker, we're here to pass a bill that makes sure, we're here to pass a bill that makes sure that the viability of the financing for the new landfill and the order dump is in fact viable.
Senator Tenor, Speaker Ben, please state your point of information.
Yes. The language that the governor may use Section 30 pledge for the landfill is the governor's language. That's what he sent down in his bill. That's not an amendment we're making.
Well, on that point, the good gentleman just clarified, but he also said in his comments a few minutes ago that they're changing shall to may. Only on the COLA.
Speaker Ben, can you just state that for the record?
I'm sorry, Madam Speaker. I'm sorry, Senator.
That's okay. Please, Senator Tenor, I will have Speaker Ben comment to that.
I appreciate that.
Just to be very clear, the language on the Section 30 pledge for the landfill is the language that the governor presented. The language on the COLA, which changes it from shall to may, is an amendment I'm making to work with the governor on trying to make this something that the court will accept and something that he can sign.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Speaker Ben. Senator Tenor, you can proceed.
Madam Speaker, I'm asking, and I'm always operating in this fashion, and the good faith effort, as I always have in everything that we do here, to try to work with all of my colleagues, and I'm asking the gentleman to divide the question, and just on those areas which were changed, is to talk about them and adopt them section by section. And I don't think it'll take too much time. I think there's some realistic and very practical changes that are being offered here, and, you know, I'm open to that. But I don't want to adopt a wholesale amendment of 33 pages without first having either one or two things happen. We sit down and go over it section by section, we understand each other in a committee of the whole here, whether on mic or off, or we go section by section just to make sure, frankly, that I'm comfortable with it. Because I am not going to be party to something that's going to continue to make sure that we're hemorrhaging $1 million out of this government without making sure that we're really careful because a lot of people's lives hang in the balance. So I'm asking to divide the question, or if not to divide the question, take a minute recess and let's go over this as a group here and the body, the members that are in this body right now to talk about each one of these amendments so that, you know, frankly, I have a level of comfort that I don't object to it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Tenor. Based on that, we're going to go ahead and take a one-minute recess.
This legislature is back in session. Senator Tenorio.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I appreciate the opportunity to confer with my colleagues and of course, our legal counsel, who is the principal author of, or at least the drafter of this amendment, as moved by the gentleman from Baragada. Madam Speaker, I have to say that there is a certain degree of ambiguity about what real changes took place. And again, this is a pretty substantive amendment. Being it's 33 pages long and with the guidance of our legal counsel, I'm pointed to several pages which are additive versus that of the governor's submission. And the governor's submittal on the amended that's in front of me does not have a section 51843. 51843 says, "Bonds authorized pursuant to this Article 8 shall only be issued if the income tax refund COLA deficit financing bonds authorized in 5GCA Section 1512.1 are also issued at the same time or earlier." So, let's talk about that for a minute. Since we're doing a sweeping eight-section amendment all at once, my concern is this. The district court judge has said, "We need financing for the closure of the Orta dump and the landfill." What we're doing here is, we tie, and this is what the argument was previously on Bill 51, "Let's go ahead and make sure that, you know, we go by way of Baragada and Harmon in order to get to the airport, to make sure that we pick up everybody along the way." No doubt, no doubt at all, that any member of this body wants to deny or deprive any one of the benefits that they are deserving, whether it be income tax, EITC, cost of living allowance, building John F. Kennedy High School, taking care of the infrastructure of this island. All of these things are needed, Madam Speaker. But we are facing a $1 million payment Monday. What time is it? 5:10 Wednesday? I hope, really, we'll continue working until we get this done. And I'd like to vote on it by tomorrow if we can't do it today. Because you know what? If we make that $1 million payment next Monday, what did the governor say we're gonna have to do? We're gonna probably have to go down the furlough road, if not layoffs, reduction in hours, compromises in security and services, public health, education. So, what we're saying here is the same thing we said in Bill 51. Yeah, they're important, absolutely. All of those COLA recipients, all our tax refund recipients, all those people who rolled money from this government, every one of them are important. But where we're here to do, you know? We're supposed to pass a viable financing package secured by Section 30. And we're saying the only way we're gonna do that is you're gonna get to take care of all those other debts at the same time. What if we can't do that? That's the question. If we can't. It's a big if. What if we can't issue those bonds at the same exact time? You're, what burden do you put on this? I mean, really? Is this viable then? Is it really viable in public law for us to say, "We can't go get financing for a new landfill and closure of the Orta dump unless you go get these other monies?"
I yield to the question. Yes, it is viable.
I'm asking, I'm speaking here. I appreciate the respect that is given to every member.
Yeah, Senator Tenorio, if that's not an inquiry, please proceed. And Senator, I mean, Speaker Pangolinan, if there's an inquiry there.
I thought there was a question there. And since, you know, it was a question relating to an amendment that I had put in, that I had sponsored and was passed by this body in 30-1, I just assumed it was directed at me. So, I was trying to be proactive here and respond to the question.
Thank you, Speaker Pangolinan. And I go, Senator Tenorio, you can proceed. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, I'm not trying to be testy here. I'm just trying to tell everyone, really, look at what you got. We got a bill here in a very short timeframe. You know, nobody wants to deny these people the things that they need. No one wants to deny refunds to our people, nor the COLA. But what are you gonna do? It's a rhetorical question, granted. Are we gonna go ahead and say, "Well, we're not gonna issue this bond unless we take care of all the other things"? I'd love to be able to say that. Politically, hey, who doesn't want to? I want to. But are you saddling this responsibility of this entire island? Really? Where are we gonna be on Monday when we have a million dollars to come out of our coffers?
Senator General, Senator Guthers, please state your point of order.
The judge will again expect a million dollars.
This is not an order, Madam Speaker.
Madam Chair.
Senator General, please let Senator Guthers proceed on her point of information.
He asked what's gonna happen.
No, Madam Speaker, that's not a point of order.
She's stating a point of information.
Point of information means you can interrupt any member speaking at any time.
Senator General, if I may, please.
Thank you. The judge is going to expect a million dollars on Monday, and a million dollars the following Monday, and every Monday after that, until she has $162 million in her hands. And there's no way that a bond can be floated successfully in a day, in two days, in 10 days, in 30 days, in 60 days.
What does this have to do with order?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Senator Guthers, for your point of information. Thank you very much. Senator Tenorio, you may proceed. Thank you very much.
Madam Speaker, I think maybe the standing rules will speak to what a point of order is. And I appreciate everybody's concerns.
Senator General, if I may, please stick to the merits of the amendment, or if there's a motion in place.
I'm trying to, but I got interrupted twice already.
Senator Tenorio, please proceed. Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, I'm really concerned about what we're doing here. And you know what? This is objectionable. Because we're gonna say that we can't go out and get funding for the landfill and the closure of Orta dump unless we do the other things too at the same exact time. Madam Speaker, I want to say one more time. This is not in the governor's bill. This is not underlined. It's not highlighted. It's not shown to be new or additive. Only did it come out when I mentioned it. So, we load this bill with sections, and we say, "Well, there's no way to tell that they're new unless you talk to the legal counsel who put it together." Then we have other things that, you know, frankly, we have a number of people from the administration who are out here, who I asked to be given a copy of this amendment so that we can go through it. Because at the end of this amendment, we're changing eight sections of this bill. All right? Before I vote yes or no, to support or not, I'm telling you now, I already have a problem. Because this, as much as it's laudable, as much as we want to do what we need to do for everyone on this island, everyone on this island is gonna suffer if Monday comes and we have to pay another million dollars. Everyone on this island is gonna suffer when the degradation of services occur. And it will occur when we can't afford to keep everybody on payroll. And every one of those people on this island, not just the COLA recipients, not those people waiting for EITC, not just those people who have tax income, income tax return coming back to them, everyone suffers. Madam Speaker, I'm gonna yield to Senator Ada, who had indicated that he has a number of clarifications he wanted to make. And I'm gonna hope that this finally comes to a point that I can agree with it. Because right now, I can't. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Tenorio. On the amendment, on Speaker Ben Pangolinan's amendment, Senator Tom Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of the amendment that's been proffered by the senator from Baragada. But before I begin my discussion here, I just want to say that I, at noon today, I attended a luncheon that was sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. And the governor was the guest speaker. He was there to talk about the state of the economy. But of course, he, what he did was he really focused in on an issue that he thought was most important to this island, and that was the issue, the landfill. And he stated very clearly that his expectations of the legislature, when he sent down this bill, was that the bill will be passed as submitted by the governor, without any changes at all. And I'm afraid that I certainly cannot, in reviewing the bill that the governor had submitted, I certainly would not be able to support it without appropriate amendments to it. And I say that because, for example, in the governor's bill, in Section 51804, which talks about the powers of the department, and that's the Department of Public Works, in what we had passed earlier, Public Law 30-1, a provision was put in there that if the Department of Public Works, if the government decides that it was gonna privatize the solid waste operations, Public Law 30-1 required that a cost-benefit analysis be performed, an economic impact study, and finally, that the legislature must approve of the agreements that are struck to privatize solid waste operations. And I think that's very important, because this government really does not have much experience in privatizing. Granted, we've had a lot of public-private partnerships, such as the Guam Power Authority, the Guam Water Works Authority. And those arrangements come under what we will call performance management contracts. But the government is still very much a party to those operations, with the exception that now you have a private party who is providing technical expertise, providing resources through their logistics channels and whatnot. But the government is still very much a part of it. The only really other privatization we've had is the Guam Telephone Authority. And we did so primarily because it was a, we had to privatize it, otherwise we were gonna have an asset that was gonna wither on the vine. And so, even with that privatization, that came back to the legislature. Why now is in the governor's bill, he's removing that requirement for the legislature to be given the benefit of a cost-benefit analysis, an economic impact study, and ultimately, for the legislature to decide on that particular change of course. Now, there are some good things in the governor's bill. For example, he added in there that in the event that the operational cost of the department increases, normally what will be done, at least under Public Law 30-1, is that Public Works will have to increase its fees in order to cover those increasing costs. Now, the governor in his bill is recommending that other funds could be made available to the department to fund its operations. In other words, in other words, to subsidize the operation. And I think that's a very good amendment that the governor has made to Public Law 30-1. Because solid waste operations is very much unlike, for example, power. When the rate of, when the cost of electricity is going up, so how does the consumer react? He starts turning off lights. He starts turning off the water heater until he actually needs it. In the case of solid waste operations, when those fees start getting too high, In the case of solid waste operations, when those fees start getting too high, they're not gonna stop, the, the response from the consumer is not necessarily to cut back on the waste that is generated, but maybe to drive by into the boonies and chuck it out there. So, we're gonna have ordot all over the island. So, I think this provides for a good pressure relief by actually allowing, uh, the operations to be subsidized if that is necessary. So, I, I, I think that's good on the part of the governor's, uh, bill. Now, one of the things that the governor actually focused in and repeated and emphasized in his transmittal letter to the legislature is that he honestly believes, and he is very optimistic, that if we provide authorization for him to go out to the bond market and borrow money and use section thirty money to, to provide the backstop for that bond, he's very optimistic that the court will see that as a good faith demonstration on our, on the government's part to actually resolve this issue, and he's very hopeful that the district court will back off on this one million dollars a week. So, this amendment that has been proffered by the senator from Barigata gives the governor what he's asking for. He's asking for section thirty backing, that's what the amendment is gonna provide to him. In several sections in the, in the governor's bill, he has emphasized, and he has put in changes, that he doesn't want general fund, uh, general fund as the backstop, he wants section thirty money. The amendment that has been proffered has made those necessary changes and uses section thirty money as the backstop. Now, I indicated earlier that I do have some problems with, uh, the governor's bill. Uh, for example, uh, the governor is proposing to establish a rate stabilization fund. I'm really not sure what that is. In my mind, a rate stabilization fund is you open an account and you kinda throw money into it. I guess in common day language, you could probably call it a slush fund.
Hold on a minute.
So, I have a problem with that, and I think that the amendment that has been proffered removes that rate stabilization fund. Now, you know, it's interesting, if we take a look at section fifty-one eight-three-five.
Five-one-eight-three-five, Senator Ada?
Um.
Okay, amended version or that?
Five-one-eight-three-five, that's, uh.
Have the governor read it?
No, five-one-eight-three-five would be, uh, page twenty-six of the amendment itself. But in the governor's bill, uh, the governor actually, uh, wanted to amend section five-one-eight-three-five, uh, as was passed by Public Law thirty-dash-one. And what the governor wanted to do in his, in, in the bill that he submitted, uh, this was under the section called "Use of Balances of Funds and Accounts and Surplus Money in Funds and Accounts." And basically, what that means is, um, well, what the governor wanted was that, uh, if there's any excess funds, where, the bill is authorizing the government to go out and borrow two-hundred-and-two million dollars. Now, mind you, we're working off of estimates. You know, we, we're working off some professionals who are saying, I think it's gonna cost this, we're gonna need that, it's gonna cost this, and they add it all up and they said, we think it's gonna, we're gonna need to go out and borrow two-hundred-and-two million. Well, what if it only comes out that we only really needed a hundred and ninety million dollars? So then, that means that we're gonna have an excess of twelve million dollars. Now, in the governor's bill, what he wants to do is he wants to add language that, that extra, the excess funds, is then to be transferred to the Department of Public Works, either to go out and buy equipment, uh, or, or whatever it needs for the purposes of the department to conduct its solid waste operations. And that's fine. But what the governor's bill does is it eliminates that requirement that the, that the legislature must then actually appropriate those funds. So, in a sense, the, the governor's bill and the amendment that he's making to Public Law thirty-dash-one is tantamount to saying in everyday language, keep the change, do whatever you want with it, if it's extra, keep the change, and do whatever is necessary. And it doesn't require the legislature's approval, doesn't require the legislature's appropriation. Well, that's so contrary to how we treat things today, because we have money that sits in the bank and is it accrues and accumulates interest? You can't just, we can't just go in there, at least not, I'm aware of, you can't just go in there and, and grab it for whatever you wanna use it for, it's gotta come to the legislature, and the legislature has to appropriate those funds that are available. So, actually, the governor's amendment was tantamount to saying, keep the change, do whatever you need to do, you don't need the legislature's approval. Well, I disagree with that. And the amendment that has been proffered by Senator Pangolinan addresses that, addresses it by saying, no, excess funds will be subject to legislative appropriations. So, we're asking that, that, that was in Public Law thirty-dash-one, it should remain as is. Of course, the governor, in the governor's bill, he indicated that, um, bonds, there's that, section five-one-eight-four-three. In Public Law thirty-dash-one, pub, section five-one-eight-four-three, basically, uh, states that bonds authorized pursuant to Article H shall only be issued if the income tax refund and the COLA deficit financing bonds, uh, are also issued at the same time or earlier. Now, uh, uh, it, it's interesting how in the governor's bill, he deletes that requirement, yet, in another section, he proposes that we increase the debt ceiling from seventy percent as it currently is required by law, or limited by law, and actually increases it to ninety percent. So, you know, he's saying, those, those, those competing interests that were very valid yesterday, uh, I, I guess is to be interpreted that he doesn't see it as valid, any, as valid today, and so therefore, we can dispense of that, but I wanna, I wanna increase the borrowing threshold. Well, it, it just ain't consistent. And let's face it, you know, there's many competing interests in our community. They're competing, but they are also legitimate, and we've got to keep them balanced. And that's, that's, that's the way it is in the political arena, because you've got to protect all the competing interests. So, again, uh, because of that, I really have a difficulty with meeting the governor's expectations to approve the bill without any changes. Finally, um, in the governor's bill, there was a, you know, in Public Law thirty-dash-one, there was a section in there about local sale of bonds, and I believe this was a, I believe this was an amendment that was introduced by the senator from Barigata, who basically said, before we go out to, you know, the bond market in, in the U.S. mainland, let's give our investors, local investors, an opportunity to get first crack at it, so that they can invest in our island. Fine. Well, the governor keeps that here, but in addition to, um, giving that opportunity to local investors, um, there was a requirement in Public Law thirty-dash-one, which requires the Guam Economic Development Authority to actually announce such bond issue in the local media outlets and solicit interest from local financial institutions. In other words, basically, let the potential, the prospective, uh, investors locally, make them be aware by going out and announcing it. But for some reason, that requirement is removed. Don't we want our local investment institutions here, our local banks, to know that such an opportunity exists for them to invest back into this community? Uh, it just doesn't make sense. You know, I, it may pale in the, you know, here we are talking about two-hundred million dollars, and this may seem like it's, you know, so, so we don't inform them, but I think that's very important. You know, otherwise, we just kinda, yeah, okay, well, provide first crack to the local investors and leave it at that, and then go off to Bo, the mail, the mainland and, and issue the bonds there, market the bonds there. So, I, I, I do have, I do have problems with, uh, the bill as introduced by the governor, uh, and I feel that the amendments that have been proffered, uh, by the senator from Pang, uh, from Barigata, Senator Pangolinan, uh, certainly are very good amendments and addresses a lot of those concerns. Uh, and so, uh, there is just one, um, uh, and, and I know that the senator yielded to me, I don't know if it's appropriate, to make an amendment, um, um, on page nineteen, uh, there was an amendment that I, 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 I think basically, I, on page nineteen at the top there, paragraph three, um, in the discussions that we had, uh, with, for Public Law thirty-dash-one, uh, I had proffered an amendment that would require that the government go out and hire professional technical services to provide the technical specifications for a bid invitation for the finance, build, operate, and leaseback option, that actually the governor had proposed in the original Bill fifty-one, which is now Public Law thirty-dash-one. And, and the whole intent was that, let's hire a professional who knows what questions to ask, who knows what parameters need to be set for invitations for bids, and then when those bids come in, to then have this professional, uh, be able to, um, to, to review and evaluate the responses to the invitation for bid, so that we can then actually compare apples to apples, and to require that professional to come back to the legislature and to the governor and report his findings within a hundred and eighty days from the enactment of the act. So, I would, um, I would, I would like to make the motion that we, we actually remove the, the cross-out so that actually that becomes a part, um, of the amendment, that there is in fact the language to require the professional technical services. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and, and, and really, that, that pretty much raises, or addresses the concerns that I, I have with the governor's bill and the basis for my supporting the, the amendments that has been introduced by Senator Pangolinan. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Frank Bloss Jr., you wanted to speak on the amendment?
Madam Speaker, before I, I speak on, on, on the main amendment, uh, I think for clarity purposes, um, I need to propose, if you'll allow me to propose, an amendment to an amendment that is found in section seven, actually, seven B, on line two, page thirty-five.
Proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, um, the amendment as, to be proffered actually has already been passed out to my colleagues, and after discussion with, I wanna say, um, my primo from Zonia, and, and to help to, to make sure that it's clarified as to what the intent is of the amendment, um, that the, the amendment is, is to be read as, uh, as presented, um, on the amendment sheet. Basically, it delineates and also makes sure that it's well-understood that before the governor, like to move, moves to sell any assets, and my understanding is there's gonna be another amendment that's going to be made, or, primo, you want me to make that for you? Um, actually, ma'am, if we can, and it's just, it's, it's just making sure that we clarify this, before the governor moves to sell any, and if you can insert the word "real" assets.
Real assets. Line two, insert the word "real" after "any."
Right.
Okay. No objections? Any objections?
Owned by the government of Guam to comply with a consent decree, he, and then we start off with a subsection, sub-subsection I, uh, shall first pursue the payment of comp, unpaid compact impact reimbursements, blah, 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 all the way down, until you get to the bottom of line nine on page thirty-five where it says "and," and then you go to a sub-subsection, um, double I or two, shall obtain legislative approval. This way, it is understood that there are two processes that have to go, have to happen before any sale, the sale of any real, uh, real assets, um, are, are going to be, are going to be conducted.
On the Bloss amendment, any objection, discussion? Senator Ogun?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I would just, uh, like to just very briefly reinforce the amendment that is being proffered to the amendment, and I wanna commend the previous speaker, certainly my primo from Barigata, for, uh, pushing and continuing to advocate for this particular issue. And I'd like to just read, uh, the subsection I, because I think that this is very, very critical as it relates to any even consideration of selling real assets of the government of Guam, and it reads, "Shall first pursue the payment of the unpaid compact impact reimbursement due from the federal government based upon the reports submitted to the Department of Interior by the government of Guam documenting Guam's cost of services provided to habitual residents of the citizens of the freely associated states of my, states living on Guam under the authority of the compact of free association between the United States and the freely associated states." I wanted to mention that, Madam Speaker, because I think it's critical not only to acknowledge that the actions of this body over the course of the past several years, and just as importantly, of the sponsor of this amendment, continues to highlight that in fact, uh, pursuing the possibility of getting and acquiring the appropriate reimbursements from the, as a result of the compact impact, certainly is another consideration and another option that's available to this government in terms of pursuing finances. So, I commend the good senator, my primo from Barigata, for pushing for this amendment to the amendment, and I stand in support of it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On the Bloss amendment, if not, would you like to close?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, I wanna thank and appreciate the, uh, the, uh, testimony provided by, by my good, uh, primo from, from Zonia, and he's right. You know, Madam Speaker, it's, it's no, it's no big secret that I have been, since taking on the task of, of trying to find new monies, uh, so that we can help to pay for those services that we need to continue to provide, and to pay for the debts that we have, that I have been pursuing the reimbursement of the un, of the, uh, amounts owed to us as a result of a compact impact reimbursement. And, you know, recognizing what the intent, the full intent of this whole bill is, I think it's only prudent, and it should be prudent policy set for this government, that before we pursue any more borrowing measures, before we pursue any efforts to sell off assets that we have within the government so that we can pay off our debts, I, you know, we have to go after this money. And you know, Madam Speaker, you know, I also wanna mention, and I want to thank you for joining me in this effort. You know, uh, as is evidenced, and I'm sure that you know, with the petitions that we've got going out, thousands of individuals also agree with this. Because, you know, at the got going out, thousands of individuals also agree with this. Because, you know, at the end of the day, it's coming, the, the monies that are going to be needed to pay off these debts, it's coming out of their pockets. And if we're going to have to go out and spend more, recognizing and realizing that there is an entity much larger than us that owes us this money, I think it's incumbent, and it is our responsibility to go after that. And so, I have proffered this amendment, so that it, it starts to become the policy that you and I both set, that you and I want to see, I'm sure, that we've got to go after this money. You know, I remember the twenty-ninth Guam Legislature, you know, our good colleague from Malolo, he stood up and every time we wanted to go after money, you know, I think everybody in here remembers the ninety-two million dollar speech that he gives, but he was right. Before we can ask our people for any more money, and in this case, before it is asked of any more money, of what is being, of what the bonds are for, go after that one first. And that's what this amendment proposes to do. So, I'd like to close off with that amendment, and then come back and speak to the main amendment. Okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, would that be the Blas Muny Barnes amendment?
That's the Blas Muny Barnes amendment, yes. If, okay, motion to include you in the...
On that amendment to the amendment, if there's no objection, motion carries.
Thank you.
Senator Blas is to recognize.
Thank, thank you, Madam Speaker. And you know, Madam Speaker, and I, and I'm, I'm going to admit, you know, there's, all throughout the day, there's been numerous discussions that we've, I've had with, with my colleagues, you know, on, on what the fate of this bill would be, and what the fate of, and what the different amendments, proposed amendments would, would tend to do. And you know, Madam Speaker, I've got to remember what we're in here for. We're in here so that we can address the request by the governor to give him the authority, the backing, the section, the, the, the section thirty backing for the bond. It's clearly outlined on the first two lines of his letter. And I recognize, yes, and I understand, that my, my amendment was outside of that scope, but I thought that my amendment, I, I'm going to stand by our amendment, that is, it is necessary. It is necessary. But that being said, Madam Speaker, you know, I'd like to stick to the, to, to the issue at hand. I'd like to be able to stick to what was asked. And I guess, a lot of the confusion that I had, and that I'm still working with, is just on the way, on the presentation of the bill. The bill as presented by the governor basically says that he's going to amend and restate section eight. I had a problem with this, because my understanding and basically looking at this thing was, it was basically repealing section eight. Then how do you amend something you're repealing? And if you're restating something, I have to agree that you restate, if you're going to restate something, you state the whole thing, then you amend it to restate it. And so, I had to get past all of that. But then going back to it, I had to go back to the real reason as to, the core reason as to why we're here. And that's to provide the authority authorization to utilize section thirty. Really, it wasn't for anything else. And if this bill were, was one-page, a one-pager, that basically authorize, gives the authorization, then I'm comfortable with it. You know, and, and going back to apologizing, because of all the discussions I've had with my colleagues earlier, but then, I appreciate all the discussions I've been having with my colleagues, as well as discussions that I've been having with members of the administration, is, it helped me to recognize and to realize and to get back into focus as to what we're here for. And there are still a lot of questions as to how the amendments that are being proffered, how they would actually fit to resolving the issue, to resolving the reason why we're here. Will it fit? Will it work? Will it stop the one million dollar a week hemorrhage, hemorrhaging that our government is being forced to provide? Will it finally deal with the landfill issue, with our trash issue, after twenty years of dealing with it? I don't know if all of this, we'll do it. And so, you know, Madam Speaker, I need to hear more from my colleagues. I thank the discussions and the deliberations that continue to happen. I happen to agree again with my, with a good colleague from, from Zonia. The last twenty or forty-eight hours wasn't spent, spent in vain. It was our effort to work collaboratively amongst each other, to deliberate, to discuss, to argue, to agree, on what we feel collectively as a body, of what, of what will be best. And I can tell you that, right now, I still need to hear more, because I'm not quite sure that the amendments, all the amendments that we're proffering, will actually get those to a point where the hemorrhaging will stop. So, with that, Madam Speaker, I, I will listen attentively to, to my other colleagues as they bring up in their, their statements as well. Thank you.
Sid Zeus Massey, my brother. On Speaker Ben's amendment, I have Senator Matt Rector, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Could you please turn on your mic?
I think it's on. There we go. Uh, thank you so much. I rise in favor of Senator Pangolinan's amendment. Look, the governor sent down a bill, which I, I generally believe was disingenuous. The, the trick to this is, is if we believe that the judge is taking a million dollars a week from the people of Guam, because we didn't authorize section thirty backing for the bonds, well, good, let's take care of it, and that's what the Speaker's amendment does. It specifically goes in and changes our bond authorization so that we can back it with section thirty funds. Clean and simple. The problem is, the original bill sent down by the governor didn't do just that. The original bill sent down by the governor authorized all sorts of other stuff and hit it in a, in a, in a very disingenuous way. And as our, my good colleague from Zonia stated, that the last forty-eight hours weren't a waste, because I know, I was sitting in the same room with you and, and my colleagues, we sat there and had to figure out what the governor actually was trying to do, what he did, and then figure out a way that we could make it work for the people of Guam. And I, I think we did that, and I think they came up with some very good amendments, and we really cleaned up the language and made it work right. You know, sometimes people forget that, that the authority of the legislature is not just to be a body that appropriates money for the executive branch to spin, but we are also a body that is here to serve as a check and balance to the executive branch. And this bill took out, the governor's original bill took out our ability to hold them in check and balance, by allowing the Department of Public Works to willy-nilly go out and privatize and lease and sign contracts without any oversight by this body. And that is just bad policy, and I believe it's darn near inorganic. So, I think the Speaker's bill, the Speaker's amendment is an incredibly good amendment, it's clean, it's to the point, and it does what we believe the judge wants us to do. So, I rise in favor. Thank you very much.
Sid Zeus Massey, Senator Rector. On Speaker Ben Pangolinan's amendment, Senator Jim Espaldon, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I understand. I, I think we're all in this, right now, trying to work in good faith to, 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 to move forward. And, and again, as you've noticed, there are many senators here who actually are speaking well of this amendment, and those are probably the senators who were privy to the meeting that took place in terms of the markup. So, some of us who were not involved really have to at least do a double take and double read on, 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 on this amendment and compare it to not only the governor's submittal, but also to, uh, uh, Public Law thirty-one. And, and so, there, there is some gymnastics, technical, legal, mental gymnastics that need to be made for us who were not privy to that meeting yesterday, to be able to reach the same conclusions. However, that being said, I'm going to remain an optimist, and, and I believe there are some good things in this amendment, as I've noted. However, there is a concern that I have, and I would like to proffer an amendment to the amendment, to Senator Pangolinan's amendment, and that would deal with section five-one-eight-four-three on page twenty-nine. And this is an amendment, basically, I, I moved to amend the, on line seventeen of page twenty-nine, the word issued, the very first word of the, of that, of line seventeen is issued. If we, I moved to amend that word to be read as, only be, uh, marketed? Marketed. And then also on line eighteen, there's also another word that's, another word issued, and I moved to change that word also to marketed. And basically, there's a, there is a distinction, and that was pointed out to me earlier, and, and I just want to make sure. And also, if you look at the court order concerning the contempt, even on page five of, of, on page five of the contempt order, basically, the court does note that one of the problems they had with Public Law thirty-one is that the legislation provides that the deficit financing bond must be issued at the same time of, or before the landfill system bonds. Now, issuing a bond, as I've been made to understand, means that that occurs only after the bonds are sold and bought by somebody, and then you issued the bond, as my understanding. Whereas, really, I think the intent of, of, of the, the amendment is to make sure that both bonds, one for the landfill and one for the repayment of COLA and income tax refunds, are marketed at the same time. And so, by making sure that we, we make that distinction between marketed and issued, which the court probably is very well aware of, and she, she of course mentioned it, like I said, in her contempt order, if we change those words from issued to marketed, then that's probably a more palatable approach, because we are no longer requiring that both the landfill bond and the COLA bond be marketed, sold, and then bought at the same time. All we're saying now is that they must be put onto the market and, and try to be sold at the same time. So, I'm, I'm moving to, to replace the word issued on line seventeen and the word issued on line eighteen to reflect the words marketed.
Senator Espaldon, you have that, you're, you're getting that in writing, right?
Actually, it's a very simple amendment.
Yes. So, just make sure that, that the clerk gets a copy of that amendment. And on, on that amendment to the amendment, Senator Ray Ternoro, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to applaud the, the good gentleman from Tamuning, and I think this might, might be good enough. I really think it might be good enough. And this is, the reason I'm concerned is that we all, I mean, I, I don't need to read the, the points before, but one point that needs to be made as well is that the district court judge has also raised the specter of the possibility of imposing what has already been assessed to be twelve million dollars in fines that this government has yet to pony up. This government is on the verge already of basically not being able to make its necessary operational needs, and the Standards and Poor's Organization is right now looking at our government. And we're looking at the possibility of already having a degradation in our rank in the standard and poorers in the financial world. If that in fact occurs, not only will be jeopardizing this bond, we'll be also jeopardizing any other bonds that we seek to take. If we make this a truly viable financing option, we're able to go to market, and we're able to market both this and the other one, in which whatever one is most palatable ultimately sells, then that will be the one, I think, that is backed by the most financially secure system. And we know that section thirty is guaranteed money, we know that the money is going to be coming in, has been traditionally, and that is why the financial stability and the viability of this is going to be much more pronounced if we tie it to section thirty. I shudder to think what will happen if we in fact have the imposition of the twelve million dollar fines, and if we do, the consequences of that. So, I think anything short of this amendment is going to sit as, with me at least, as it already exists. We need to make sure that we are going to do something that is in fact viable, and we're not going to be going to market, um, saying, you're only going to issue this if you issue the other one at the same exact time or later. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Ternorio. On Senator Jim Espaldon's amendment to the amendment, Senator Pangolinan, did you have your hand raised? If not, um, we're going to go ahead and go do a thirty-second recess.
Legislature is back in session. It's about 6:30 right now. We're going to go ahead and recess until 2 o'clock tomorrow afternoon.